Capital review and approval. So yeah, we'll just go ahead and get started here. So the first is public comments on city finances. Is there anybody present that would like to make a top, a comment about any topic regarding city finances? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. So I'm actually going to go into item three first. So the letter from Jerry Stoker regarding Mark Rees certifications. I'll just go ahead and read this here. To the Norwood City Council Finance Budget and Audit Committee. From Jerry Stoker. Says Building Commissioner, Building Inspector Mark Rees received a renewal notice on May 11th, 2019 for the renewal of both his building inspector certification and his residential building official certification. These certifications cost $30 each and are expected to be paid 30 days prior to the expiration date of June 30th, 2019. Please appropriate $60 into that fund, 010-820-57521 as soon as possible. We will need to have the check in the mail by May 25th to ensure these required certifications do not expire. Sincerely, Jerry Stoker. So this letter originally came on May 14th and I communicated directly to the building or here at the building department, Carrie Towne, who does a lot of, a lot of work that I would say is above her pay grade, which we're very grateful for. And so this is, and one of them is kind of helping somewhat with the finances kind of in that department. So we really appreciate her work on that. And so I communicated to her that we, essentially what's going on is they have a contractual, I guess contractual spending. And that is, I'm gonna pull this up here really quick. 0820. They essentially have open POs that are already, that like blanket POs for the end of the year. And they do, they are going to need some additional appropriations before the end of the year. The problem is that we're going to probably want to wait until we get a little bit closer so we know exactly where we want to pull the money from that we're going to have to give them. The financial recovery plan didn't, doesn't have enough money in there for all of the expenses that they're probably going to have when it comes to their contractual. Because essentially, we take in money from building fee, permit fees, and then we then hire, like one of the items that we get money for is for plan review, for Majid's plan review. And so they've got three $8,000 encumbrances, this is as of 5/31/2019, three $8,000 encumbrances for his services in the second, third, and fourth quarter that currently, there's no, they haven't spent anything on. So I told Carrie that in the financial, they're $10,182 over in appropriation. So they actually are going to have to take out a couple of those. And I did tell Carrie, or told the building department essentially that they just need to close some of these blanket POs that they have open for the end of the year, which they, departments do that for various reasons because they don't want things just happen and they feel like if they put these blanket POs out early, they know that they'll have that money at the end of the year because the department head kind of has to give permission to, to close a PO essentially. And so anyways, long story short, I told her we need to close the POs and that we'll then fix it before the end of the year. And so I, just to give you all the actual, so they have their unexpended balance, sorry, their beginning appropriations was $88,871 for contractual services. It looks like they're... Or actually, I think that's what we spent last year. Okay. So beginning appro, yeah. So basically, they're $10,000 over in what all of their appropriations. So essentially, they, we're going to get this fixed and the state auditors know about this, but we just need to direct them to close the, my recommendation is for finance committee to direct the building commissioner and/or the safety service director just to close some of these blanket POs and we will get it fixed for them so that, we'll get it fixed at the end of the year when we get closer to that. Do you all have any questions or concerns or potentially want to go a different direction on that?
My question is, if that was the feedback you gave the department, do we know why that didn't happen?
I don't. I, I know that this, something about this ended up in my inbox again, so I just wanted to bring this to the committee to make sure that you all were okay with that direction.
So to your knowledge, this hasn't been paid?
To my knowledge, it hasn't. Or to my, to my knowledge, I think potentially it was paid out of pocket by the building inspector, Mark Rees. However, he is, we do owe him the money. I mean, I, he's not going to go and, Mark's a really outstanding guy. He's not going to come and, come after the city for 60 bucks. However, it's the right thing to do is for us to get that back to him at some point. Which is why I wanted to make sure I brought this to you to make sure that you're okay with the direction that we just closed some of these blanket POs and we, and that you all are also okay with fixing it before the end of the year and that we'll get it fixed.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with you two, John?
Yeah, that's fine. You, you went over that. $10,000, there were $10,000 over budget.
And it was, wasn't their fault because the financial, this, the newest financial recovery plan actually had lower appropriations than the last one did. And so when we passed the new one, we had to reduce the appropriations for that account by $10,000.
Okay.
So it, in, in this, remember, these, these plan, the, the plan, the mayor presented the plan to us and so him and Joe had the plan a lot longer than we did. And so they should, I would have thought they would have reviewed the plan for their departments to make sure their departments had enough money. Essentially, that didn't happen, so.
So blanket POs. You went over that. They have POs that are?
They, they want to make sure that they'll be able to pay Majid all year long for the plan reviews. And so they put POs out there and they do this in a lot of departments, which I understand why they do it. I don't know if it's quite best practice, but it's what it is. They put the POs out there so that that money is set aside so that they know like even if something catastrophic happens or whatever, nobody, that money's, the PO is already issued so they already have a approval to spend the money essentially. So that's why they have the blanket POs. However, I've tried to tell them that we are not going to let them wither and, you know, suffer at the end of the year, that we'll get it fixed. It's just unfortunate that the mistake happened in the first place because, again, the, we, the mayor and the safety service director have the financial recovery plan a lot longer than we did, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I will send, I will send an email to the building commissioner and see, see the rest of the finance committee and let them know kind of that direction. So that, that email or that memo is answered. Perfect, okay. Next item, this is actually a good news item, which I always love good news items. It's a letter from Joe Gears regarding street improvements. Essentially, it's the bid letter. It's information about the bidding for Section Avenue. So I'm going to, this will get read at the council meeting, but I'm just going to read it to you all as well. Dear Ms. Lake and members of council, on Thursday, June 20th, we have bid openings for the Section Avenue improvements project. Enclosed, please find a letter from JMA Consultants listing the base bids and the alternate bids from four different companies. We've asked the law department to prepare an ordinance to authorize the safety service director to enter into a contract with the lowest investor. Please review the enclosed and advise me what you'd like to do. Thank you for the consideration of this letter. So essentially, we've got the, the original letter estimated that the project would, from section, from Ross to Worth, essentially the, hold on. Yeah, essentially, we estimated from Ross to Worth $150,000. However, we can go to Dale Avenue and do three, catch, completely rebuild three catch basins for an extra $35,000. So essentially, the best bid that came in, it's that alternate bid, it's $186,350. So we're actually going to be able to, yeah, get that done. So the thing is, I think that potentially, I think it's a good plan to go all the way to Dale instead of stopping at Worth, it's not that much more. I also like the idea of just getting those catch basins done because some of them are collapsing and like falling apart, so it'd be good to get it done in this, at the same time because it's going to be cheaper to do it together. So.
That's wonderful news.
Okay. Are there any concerns if we, to do, to recommend a council to go ahead and try to move forward with the full thing? Yep.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
This document is separate from what we've seen previously about section. I'm recalling the number 260.
The one, the original letter that we got about those three streets, I think is attached on the third letter, is at the very end.
Date is November 20?
Yeah, is that when, is that what you're talking about or you're talking about something different?
I believe more recently, we had a communication saying the city's part would be around 260 and that it was to be paid out of the street fund.
I think there was one around Highland Avenue that, was it like really recent that you're thinking?
That's my recollection. It's not here, so my concern, my concern is, I'm not sure it's clear here which projects we're adding on to and where all the funding sources are. So I would want that to be a lot tighter because what I'm recalling looked like we were re-assigning where we would spend the block grant dollars and I'm not sure where that got approved.
Gotcha, okay. So this one specifically, are, the full amount of this project is going to come out of the street fund?
When you say the full amount, you're talking about the four, not the four, you're talking about the Section Avenue improvements?
Yes, so the Section Avenue improvements are all, like, there's not any grants or anything for that one. That one is just.
You're going to have to speak up.
So there's no, there's not grants, there's not any other additional funds for that specific project, but there is a project that we might talk about if we have time at the end, the Highland Avenue project to repave that one. And that one had alternate funding sources included, including the street fund.
Okay.
Let me see if I can find that email. If that, I.
I think maybe they came on the same day and that's why I'm not tracking. I'm going to look here too.
Yeah, it probably did. Okay. Awesome, okay, it's cool. So I'll put that in there that we agree with that, moving forward with the.
I, I want to be clear, I want to note more clarity on the project, the distinctions of which ones and which parts are there. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but in terms of presenting this out, I do think it should be more clear.
Which, I mean, what is unclear about the Section Avenue one?
I'm looking right now to make sure.
Yeah, that's fine. And we can always come back to it too, so.
So this letter is dated May 22 and it has an attachment from April 25. It's regarding Highland, Ross, and Section altogether. And I think that's what was not clear to me in terms of how this project intersects with the improvements listed in the other letter.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue on that was the title of the email or title of the letter, but if you actually look at the.
I'm looking at, I do see this says Highland and then the second amendment or attachment says Ross and Section. It doesn't have any dollars on that one. So on the cover, when it talks about, the project's been approved for 120 along with the grant funding of 300,000, the project total is 680, needs to be done in a year, the city's match is 260 to get to the 460 for the street work completed, approval for the bids, which I think is what we have here. I'm also requesting that the 260 city match come from the 2019 street fund.
Gotcha. Yeah, so there, I mean, there, everything I've understood so far, they're two separate projects, so we definitely can get clarification. I can, don't know exactly if we're going to get that before the council meeting, but they're, yes. I know the confusion, but I think they are two separate projects, so we'll find out. I, I will try to get clarification before that council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Awesome. So the next item, we'll do the letter from Jim Stith, this should be quick, regarding the annual capital review and approval. So I think this was... Let's see here, okay. So I'll just read the letter from Jim and we can just talk about whether we have any questions or want to bring anything else up to him on it, but. The two Norwood City Council Finance Committee subject annual capital assets review and approval. In compliance with the auditor of state's report on accounting methods recommendations, the city auditor's office has adopted a policy that requires an annual review and approval of the city's capital assets by the finance committee. Each year, a report is generated by the auditor's office listing all capital assets, their cost, annual depreciation, and year to, year-to-date depreciated value. This report is part of our annual audit and to improve our transparency will now be required to be reviewed by city council's finance committee. So this is basically presented for your review. It has just a listing of all of the kind of assets that we list in our audit. You know, things like the fire, you know, fire station, a police station, a bath house at a park. All these various things that are, I guess, on here. And it shows the current cost of, the, the original cost, how much was depreciated, and then the total depreciation. So you can kind of see that there. The, I think the amount that was depreciated in any one year is that third column and then the total depreciation's the last one.
Can you read that last comment?
Yeah, so the amount that was depreciating, depreciation for these purposes, it's really not that, we don't pay taxes on pretty much anything, so we don't have any money profit-producing enterprises. Some cities do, I don't, we don't. So, but we still have to like do accounting like any other kind of business would do accounting when it comes to depreciating assets. And so the first column is the original amount that was spent to purchase something. The second column is the, when we talk about the dollar amounts, is the amount that was depreciated that in this particular year. And then the third col, column appears to be the total depreciation. Yes, the total depreciation for the life of the asset so far. So if you look on page three or four, halfway down, it talks about the E911 communication system. So it has like the 188,000 in the first column, the original amount. And then it has $9,408 in the second column and the third column, $9,408 because this is the first year that we're depreciating any amount, those amounts are equal because we just bought it 11/19/2018. Which by the way, I've heard very good things about the 911 communication system and it's.
It's really hard to hear.
Which by the way, I've heard good things about it. I've talked to Mark Rankin and everything's working very well with that. I know we haven't got an official update on that, so. Okay, are there any other, any other items you all want to talk about with the annual capital assets review? Okay.
Do we have to approve this or anything, just, it's just for our knowledge?
I was thinking about putting in the, not the minutes, but our report that we reviewed it and acknowledged its existence or however we want to phrase it. Okay, cool. Okay, so the next item is a letter from, another letter from Joe Gears. I'll read it out loud, but we got it in our email regarding the traffic light at Section and Ross Avenue.
Can we go back for just a second? So I, I get this, this is something we're supposed to review. I would definitely like clarity, like do we need to just document that we reviewed it or is there something else we need to? Since this is the first one, I just want to make sure we get that from Joe.
Okay, I'll make sure that we get that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is a letter from the, or actually, just a quote, well, an email and a quote. Let's see here. Okay, this is about the traffic li, or the traffic light at Ross and Section Avenue that's been blinking red for eternity at this point. Joe, the price, so they basically say, Joe, the price to replace the cabinet with the new controller, monitor, and disconnect will be $8,750. I would recommend that we tell, you know, tell this Joe to just spend the money to get it done because that traffic light's been out for a long time. I've got a lot of complaints about it. And in particular, one complaint that really was striking to me that I never even thought about were middle school students that actually have to cross that intersection to walk to school and that when there was a traffic light, it forced the cross-traffic to stop. And that when there's no traffic light and it's just a stop sign, that people aren't paying attention to the, to the students that are on the corners, they're just stopping if they even stop at all, you know, barely stop and just go. And that is, it was seemed, they seemed to be a lot more dangerous for them and they had a lot more trouble getting to school. So again, something I didn't think about because that intersection doesn't have the little even pedestrian signal things, but it is something that is, was a concern to them and they raised it to me. So it's, this is just something that, even without that concern, which I think is very important, it needs to get done.
That's a dangerous intersection.
Yes.
Not seeing repetitive accidents there, so you have to go, put the, put the light in, please.
Okay, cool. So I'll just put that on our report out. Is there any other, any objections to that? Okay. Perfect. Yeah, I'm not sure though why it took so long to get this quote, but I'm just glad that we have it, so can't complain about that. So the last, I guess.
James?
Yep.
Can we give response from the audience?
Yeah, sure, if there's something, yeah.
I don't know if I'm allowed to or not, but on your traffic light there?
Yep.
It would be real helpful if they put up signs that tell the lanes which can turn and which to go straight from, so the people constantly getting confused going straight from one or the other.
That's true.
Just saying on that topic, it would be nice.
No, that's valid, yeah. If, if there, because right now, I think there's really not, I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no intention for anything to be required. I mean, I always get into the right lane sometimes if somebody's wanting to turn left or.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
So we have in front of us tonight paperwork to, to start the process to replace from Ross Avenue, from Section to, I'm sorry, from, to Worth, from Ross to Worth, right?
Right, yeah.
So once that's done, I, then I would assume they would put striping down and maybe that will happen, but we're talking about on, so that might, that might happen after they, they replace.
Right, the strapping or the hanging.
That makes perfect sense. So we've got paperwork in front of us repairing that street and hopefully, when that's done, that will happen.
That's great.
Because that's a great comment, yeah.
Yeah, I'll definitely make sure that it is known to the safety service director that comment was there, so. I don't know much, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know if it's intentionally like that or not, but it does, it is confusing, I will definitely admit to that.
Well, like you said, you're getting one lane to go straight, well, somebody else will get in the other lane and one goes straight.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So it's, it's confusing a lot of times, especially when the traffic's a little heavier.
Yeah.
But I'd just like to eliminate that.
No, that's a good point. I will make sure that the, the safety service director here is.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we're going to talk about, at this council meeting, Donna Lake is going to bring up a topic, I think, that we'll talk about there, but I'm going to want to just at least talk about it here for just a second because we're going to need, we're going to have to act as a council at some point, but I wanted to make you all aware. So the mayor has written letters, I knew about the one letter to the fire department, but he's written letters to both departments essentially telling them to hire up to the amounts that are in the collective bargaining agreements that are, that are currently out there. And something that's much more than what council approved and our, what the mayor presented to us to approve in our financial, in the financial recovery plan. So our appropriations right now don't match the amount of spending that he is going to try to, or he's ordering the departments to spend. And so essentially, that, that creates a mismatch, not only in the fact that, you know, he's spending something without council's approval, he's also spending something in violation of the financial recovery plan. And so they have been made aware of these letters and passed a resolution today to essentially tell, have the city to pass a new plan within 45 days or they're going to start potentially taking actions on their own. And some of these actions, as Donna will talk about, are, they're, they're pretty much automatic. They're not even things that like, there's discretion over, they just start cutting things. And so it, we'll be talking about it, but I just wanted to bring it up to your all's awareness as the finance committee that, that threat is out there, that, you know, a plan that we passed almost three months ago today, that the mayor presented to us, is now not good enough for the mayor and that he's going to act in, you know, act differently than what he said he was going to do. And so without seeking council's approval or finance committee's approval, without permission to say anything to us, he's saying that, look, I, I don't really care what you all want to do, I'm just going to spend this money anyways. And I don't know statutorily if he has the right to, I mean, he definitely doesn't have the right to do it based on financial recovery plan, but just in general, let's say we weren't in fiscal emergency, statutorily, does he have the right to authorize spending in excess of what we've approved as appropriations? And, and in particular, in the ordinance that we used to pass the financial recovery plan, it listed an amount of personnel, like we specifically called out. And there's Ohio, there's some Ohio revised code that says that it's council, council's responsibility to set the number of personnel. Now, that number of personnel that we set might get us in trouble in other ways, you know, like this, it could mean that the city's in trouble, but it's still up to council to set that, even if there could be other ramifications, let's just say. And so anyways, long story short is, it's just something that we're going to have to, like as a whole council, I mean, this will probably be more of a committee, the whole thing, that we're all going to have to kind of talk about it because, you know, the spending is, is dramatically different. It's, you know, 1.5 to $2 million more a year in spending than what we originally anticipated. And so the numbers are, I think, are getting crunched as we speak on what that could mean, but, you know, I think the council will have to decide at some point about how we want to kind of react to that. Well, we definitely have to decide. We'll have to decide whether we're going to go along with that or try to fight it in other ways. One of the questions that I have been asking and still not getting a good answer on is, can council, I feel like we're not getting completely, well, I feel like there's not enough time for our city law department, let's just say that, to research some of these issues in depth when it comes to like these Ohio revised code and how some of these core tenants of government, which is that you have a council that approves appropriations and then you have a executive branch or the mayor's, the city administration that then spends money that council approves. And we don't have one single dictator branch, we have two branches. And I don't think that we're going to get the advice that we need from our city law department on some of these core tenants about whether council, no matter what else, whether it's a collective bargaining agreement or anything else, can council truly limit the amount that's spent? Because right now, I don't really see what the purpose at times of the Ohio revised code is of the legislative authority approving appropriations if one, if the mayor can just decide willy-nilly like, hey, we're just going to hire a bunch of people. Because the next thing you know, the law director, law, sorry, the auditor is going to say, oh, look, we need a human resources director, I'm hiring one of those. The building commissioner is going to say, you know what, we need two more building inspectors, we're just going to hire those. And we're going to make hire a plumbing and electrical inspector as well, we're just going to have all that. The, that one's not as good of an example because they report to safety service director, but the treasurer can hire who he wants to, the law director can hire an extra lawyer. And there'd be no extra approvals if, or at least to me, it seems like that they could probably get away with that without extra approvals if this can kind of go through. And we don't have appropriations and they can still hire anyways. And so I think it's just something that we're all going to have to kind of, we'll have to figure out, we'll have to talk about it. Be very curious how the mayor thinks that he is going to balance this financial recovery plan with hiring because we looked at, the numbers have, were looked at at one point and it's impossible to balance. And, yeah, it's just kind of where we're at. And so we've got lots of items actually on this council. The mayor has also stated at times that there's this capital improvements plan, there's this thing, council's talking about all these things they're going to spend and spend money on this, spend money on that, they're going to buy this and they're going to buy that and we don't even have the money yet. Because we were directed by the financial recovery commission that we had to come up with a capital improvements plan. And so we came up with a draft capital improvements plan and the mayor's going off, you can't, you're spent, you know, how dare we spend money on renovating a park? How dare we spend money on replacing playground equipment? How dare we spend money on streets? How dare we spend money on, on the roof of city hall? The mayor's essentially saying that, how dare we act as a city? Why not continue to do what's happening in the last 16 years and just neglect the city like he's done? How dare we actually take action to try to fix something? And that's how I feel and that's how, that's exactly what he is saying. That is exactly what he's implying by going after council for actually trying to plan for the improvements that are needed at the city. And so two of the items that are, or three of the items that are on the item, there's a ladder truck for the fire department, that's 1.2 million dollars, that's on the capital improvements plan. How dare council try to go and do that? There's a $600,000 fire engine, like a pumper truck, I think, that's on the plan. You know, how dare we do that? There's 11 police cruisers over the next five years on the plan. How dare council buy police cruisers? And so at this point, we'll have to decide, yeah, really, he's going to have to decide what he's going to present to us, like what he's actually thinks is going to be funded. It's going to be interesting having 52 police officers. I think they're going to have to triple up on police cars because we have so few right now that work, but how are we going to afford to buy all the police cars we need if we spend it all on personnel? spend it all on personnel? How are we going to afford to buy a fire engine, $1.2 million fire engine, if we're spending it all on personnel? And so, you know, there's going to -- he's going to have to make some tough decisions on what he presents to us. And again, it'll -- sorry, Donna, to bust your bubble tonight, but please, we should talk about it then, too. I just wanted to make sure that it was known to -- that we all knew kind of what was at stake and what was really -- what we're really talking about here.
So going back to a couple of the other items, can we even move forward with those? The street improvements, knowing, I mean, where?
I would wait to have this discussion in council meeting, just my -- just my advice to you. What's up to you?
Well, I mean, it's an item on our agenda, so, I mean, I think we can choose either way, but I think that we could still recommend. The street fund is sacred in the sense that we can't go and spend money on police and fire personnel out of the street fund. And what they've tried to do in the past is they've put public works -- and I don't know when this started, I can't say that it started with the current mayor, I don't know when it started, but for as far back as I've been able to kind of tell, we've been paying for public works personnel and streetlights and salt out of the street fund. And in this last revision of the financial recovery plan, well, one -- well, a couple of those things we should have never been paying out of there, but the other ones, maybe you could have justified it, but really, the street fund is intended for capital improvements of the streets. And that's what it's intended for.
Well, I mean, it's part of the fiscal recovery plan is that capital improvements. I mean, just wondering if all that's going to change now, too?
Yeah, I think that we -- I still think that we can move forward with the street fund stuff. The street funds, and we can talk about it at the council meeting, as Donna said, but I do think there's enough appropriations there. I think, let me just check the capital, how much is in there at this exact second. The street fund, there's $795,000 unexpended balance in that fund now. So if we spent -- on this first one, for the Section Avenue, it would be $186,000. And frankly, I think it's -- I just think it's money well spent and they're also going to fix three catch basins while they're at it, so.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely want that done, just.
Yeah, I hear you. I -- I mean, at this point, I think we still have to move forward with it. Now, we don't draw the street fund down to zero. I mean, frankly, it's -- I think it's still going to have $400,000 to $500,000 in it at the end of the year, is my guess, based on where we've kind of been at. So the next mayor will have that at the start plus, you know, the $600,000 to $800,000, depending on how the gas tax revenue comes the next year, an extra $600,000 to $800,000 also for streets. So whoever the next mayor is, we're going to leave them in a -- because of the work that we did in the financial recovery plan, we're going to leave them well.